The April 6th Parker Town Council Meeting at 7:03 PM. All council members are present, so for those of you who are watching, I do have a flag here, and I'm going to put my flag right down here because we're still going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, uh, those of you who want to join me, join me. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States.
Of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty.
And justice for all.
Wow, that was the first virtual, uh, pledge of allegiance I've ever done in my life. So that was pretty sweet, everybody. All right, we're going to muddle through. We're going to, um, get rolling. First off, thank you all for, uh, for attending the virtual meeting. And for those of you who are guests who are watching as well, um, thank you for very much for participating in our very first, uh, virtual Parker Town Council meeting. I'm here at Town Hall. Council members are all at their homes. I'm going to guarantee you, I'm going to make some mistakes tonight. We're all going to make some mistakes tonight, but we're going to get through it all. We're going to smile wherever possible, since I can see all your faces. I'm going to make sure if you're not smiling, I'm going to call you out. And sort of like right now, everybody smiled, and that's the way it should be. Um, so let's go ahead and get started. Uh, general public comment is being done a little bit differently. Uh, for those of you who are tuning in for the first time or who haven't seen any of the notices or messages we had out on social media, um, general public comment, which is public comment not, or for anything that is not on our agenda, the way you do that now is you go to our website, parkeralign.org, and there is a form for you to fill out for public comment. At 5 o'clock, the day of our council meetings, that shuts off. All of those comments are compiled and sent to council for their review. Normally during our normal council meeting, no action or taken on general public comment items. So that's why it's being done that way and still follows with the procedure. Uh, so let's go ahead and move on to reports, items, comments from mayor and council. Council, like I told you before, I'm going to go through the list of your roll call list, just so you guys are aware. So please mute yourself unless I call on you. That way we minimize any background noise or feedback. So let's start with Josh Rivero.
Uh, nothing much to report, Mayor. Um, continue with virtual meetings with, uh, for example, Cherokee Water Basin and, uh, some other organizations, but, uh, we're still running. The town's still doing good.
Okay, Cheryl Pogue.
Yes, I don't have anything. Uh, we did have a Douglas County Housing Authority meeting online, but nothing really pending to report.
Okay, Jeff Toborg.
Good evening, everyone. We did have a Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting last week. Just so everyone knows, the chamber is still in full swing. They are actually hosting Zoom meetings on a, uh, couple of times a week, uh, engaging businesses, talking about strategies both during this, uh, time and coming out of this time. So hats off to the chamber for continuing and engaging their, uh, uh, membership. Second, Councilman Dyak and myself had a chance to meet as liaisons with, uh, Chief Rappas last week. The department is doing good under extraordinary circumstances. They are stepping up and doing extraordinary. So I think all of us can commend the police department on, uh, and our first responders on the job they're doing during this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Renee Williams.
Um, I think the newest thing for me right now is I've been asked to serve on the Douglas County High Needs Work Group, and we're meeting every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to make sure those, um, citizens that, that live within Douglas County are, that are high needs are getting the support that they need, um, throughout this, this situation.
Okay, Debbie Lewis.
Um, I don't have anything to report. None of my liaisons, uh, we've, we've met, only we have not. And, um, I'm just happy I could get, make this work, and I can see most of y'all.
Keep your fingers crossed that it'll keep working. John Dyak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, like Councilmember Rivero, uh, all of my external assignments are going to virtual, Dr. Cog, uh, the Regional Transportation Commission, and E470, all are within the next few days. Uh, so I have lots of tutorials on that. Uh, I've also been invited to, uh, to be part of a, a Wednesday phone call, uh, discussion regarding, uh, economic relief coordination. Uh, it was, it's, uh, it's coordinated by, by the county, and there's going to be other municipalities who are just going to talk about what's going on and try to muddle through this. So that is all.
Okay, excellent. And for me, um, as you guys can imagine, I'm on just as many meetings, uh, Zoom and virtual meetings as you guys are, uh, and noticed an interesting dynamic this week where, um, I'll be on, I'll have a local meeting scheduled, like with the local mayors or the, someone in Douglas County. And then when we're about half an hour before that meeting starts, we'll get notice that the state wants to do a meeting about at the same time. So the local will switch to a different day, and then right before the state starts, the governor decides he wants to have a meeting, and so that coincides with the state. And there's been times I've been sitting there going, I have no clue who I'm on the meeting with right now. It's, I just have to listen to cues on who they're talking with. But, uh, Zoom's been working out. The virtual meetings have been going good here. I can tell you here at Town Hall, um, the couple of times that I have been in, staff has been very good about monitoring the appropriate social distancing and making sure everything is still running. For the citizens out there, I can tell you, we're blessed to have the staff that we have here at the Town of Parker, uh, to keep things rolling. So it's been pretty good. All right, so moving on to our next item on our agenda, the, our next item, our next agenda item is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be in, uh, initiate, or excuse me, considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote unless there's a council member wishing to have one removed for further discussion. As a reminder, ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and cannot be removed for discussion. Cheryl, you have your hand up. Do you have a question about consent agenda?
I do. Item C, Resolution Number 20 dash 018. I wonder if that would be better waiting until the next meeting.
Okay, is there anyone else? Cheryl has asked a question. If there's, um, you have consent agenda items in front of you right now of 4A through 4D?
Cheryl, I, I think that it's a resolution, so it can be changed as, as dates change. So with that, I enter, I would, uh, move to approve consent agenda items A through D, please.
Okay, we have a motion from Josh. Do I have a second?
Second from Debbie.
We have a second from Debbie. I will go, uh, roll call, uh, vote on this for, um, motion by Josh, second by Debbie. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. So next item on our agenda is item number five. These are our public hearings. Please bear with me, I forgot my reading glasses at home, so I'm going to do my best here, um, to, to read this. So this is a time where citizens are encouraged to, during our public hearings, there'll be a public comment session. So it'll be a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. The use of video conferencing technology can be challenging when inviting public comment. Therefore, to help us proceed in an organized fashion, we request that you use the chat feature to indicate you would like to speak. After selecting chat from this menu, please type your name and address and the topic you would like to discuss. If your name is different than how it's shown on Zoom, please also include your identifiers so we can unmute the correct microphone when it's time. We will, we will acknowledge speakers in the order they're received. When you're acknowledged for your turn to speak, we request that you introduce yourself by stating your name and address and speak respectfully. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. And, um, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move on. And Paul, you're going to be presenting for Parker Point filing number one, Minor Development Plat and Subdivision Agreement.
That's correct. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council. It's interesting to be before you this evening, uh, in this non-traditional format. But as the mayor just alluded to, the first public hearing this evening is project number S U B 19 dash 052. It's the Parker Point Minor Development Plat and Subdivision Improvement Agreement. Please note that the applicant has provided the notification affidavits stating that they have legally noticed the hearing. Next slide, please. The subject property for this evening is located at the southeast corner of Parker Road and Stroh Road. To the north are a combination of developed and undeveloped commercial pad sites. To the northwest is, um, a, a series of developed commercial pad sites. To the west is a series of developed and undeveloped commercial pad sites. To the south is Kenny Creek, and to the east is the Colorado Golf Club. Please note that, that's okay, I can do it from here, Danette. Uh, please note that Town Council did approve this exact application in March of 2019. However, the applicant was unable to meet the financial obligations of their subdivision improvement agreement, and therefore the MyLars and the SIA were never recorded, and the approval expired. The applicant now has their financing in place and is requesting reapproval of the application or, or begin development of the property. Just for background and context, um, the request this evening is for a minor development plat. A minor development plat is a type of subdivision application. The purpose is to review the lot sizes and layout for compliance with town standards, as well as any shared improvements. Staff and PC's recommendation, and ultimately Town Council's determination, are based on the six approval criteria that we'll touch on here in just a moment. Individual site improvements are not reviewed with this type of application. If the minor development plat were to be approved, future site-specific improvements are reviewed with future site plan submittals. Next slide, Danette. Thank you. Uh, the town's master plan calls out this intersection as a community center. The community center designation is intended to serve a large market area that serves multiple neighborhoods. Common uses found in these designated areas are retail and personal services, business services, office, recreation, restaurants, and things of, things of that nature. The creation of commercial lots is consistent with this designation. All right, Danette, next slide. The current zoning of the property is modified commercial that allows for general retail uses, office uses, restricted drive-throughs at the intersection of Stroh and Parker Road. Uh, there is one lot standard identified in this zoning, and that is a minimum lot width of 75 feet. The smallest lot width that's currently proposed is 96 feet. With that, the creation of lots for commercial development is consistent with the current zoning. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed plat and the associated lots that would be created, as well as two tracks on the south end or right side of the screen here. The 15 lots that are proposed are shown with the red lines. The two tracks to be dedicated to the town are shown in green on the right-hand side. The two blue circles indicate the proposed write-in, write-out access movements from the project, and the yellow star indicates the full movement access, uh, that is located just east of the subject property. Next slide, please. Staff won't go through each of these individually, but this is a list of obligations that the development is responsible for. All of these developments will need to be satisfied at the appropriate time, spelled out in the subdivision improvement agreement. Next slide. As referenced earlier in the presentation, there are six approval criteria for a minor development plat. Staff, along with our referral agency partners, has reviewed the application for compliance with these standards and determined that the application has met these standards. Next slide, please. All referral agencies responded to this application with either advisory comments or no comments. Next slide. And on March 12th of this year, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve the request for a minor development plat at the southeast corner of Parker Road and Stroh Road. Now, with concludes staff's presentation, however, we certainly are available for any questions you all may have.
All right, Paul, thank you very much. Council, are there, do any of you have any questions? If you do, you can raise your hand on your, on, uh, on Zoom here, and I'll call on you. Okay, Cheryl. Cheryl, you need to unmute yourself first.
My question relates to the referral agencies that had advisory comments. How were those addressed?
Uh, those comments are, will be satisfied prior to the issuance of a construction permit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Josh, Josh Rivero.
Yeah, my question, uh, it goes into, uh, the write-in, the write-out, and then the full movement, um, in reference to, I believe it would be criteria number two, the LDO. I see drawings from the landscape artist that there's a full movement. I see plating in the site application, or I'm sorry, the application that it's, the engineer's drawings just show the two rights, and then there's a road on the backside that disappears. So I'm looking for clarification, and what plan are we actually voting? Are we voting on a plan that, that includes the full movement? Or are we voting on a plan that is just the write-in, the writes-out at this time?
So the, the answer to your question is it's the same plan. The plat, the requested plat is only for the properties shown in the previous slide. However, in order to get the full movement access, the applicant was required to get an access easement from the property owner to the east. And so in addition to that access easement, they were also required to install that landscaping. So, so that full movement access will be, uh, available through an access easement.
Okay, council, I don't see any other hands raised. Last chance for that. Okay, you see none. We're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. I'll open up public comment at 7:19 PM. I do see we have some attendees. Again, if it's, if you wish to, uh, make public comment, please put your name and address in the chat window, and I will call on you. Okay, I am not seeing anyone for public comment, so I will go ahead and close public comment at 7:20 PM. Council, as, uh, I stated before, I will go through each of you individually for comment, and then we will go back individually with each of you for a vote. So, uh, I'll have you unmute yourself when it's your turn, when I call your name. Otherwise, please keep your microphones muted. Josh Rivero.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking for clarification in, to what we're voting on tonight does not identify the full movement. There's no, there's no road through between, beyond, next to lot, to the south of Lot 1. There's no road identified in the site plan amendment. So I'm wondering, are they then obligated? Are we, are, what are we voting on tonight? And how are we assured that they're not going to build this entire project with a write-in, write-out onto Stroh?
So Councilman Rivero, I can say that the access easement has been executed and is recorded, and that is available for, for the use and, and the benefit of the development.
So is there, is there legal heartburn by approving a subdivision filing that doesn't identify that access?
Jim?
Sorry.
Jim, does, do you have any legal concerns of them, of this being approved without identifying the access? Okay, he shook his head, no. Okay. All right, Cheryl Pogue.
Yeah, regarding that access easement, they've acquired the ease or the access, the full service, the access. Where is the financial responsibility going to fall for that? On the developer?
To make those improvements?
Yes.
That's correct, on the developer.
All right.
Okay, Jeff Toborg.
No questions for me, thanks, Paul.
Renee Williams.
No questions for me, thank you.
Debbie Lewis.
No questions.
John Dyak.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your work.
Okay, council, I will, uh, need a mo, you have two items in front of you, items, uh, 5A1 and 52. Jim, just give me a head shake, that's two separate motions. Okay, that's a yes, so I will have two separate motions in front of you. I would entertain a motion on 5A1, please.
I move to approve based upon staff findings in the staff report, the minor development plat.
Renee, seconds. Okay, we have a motion by Josh and a second by Renee. I will go through a roll call vote. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for 5A2.
I move to approve based upon findings in the staff report, the subdivision improvement agreement.
Second. Renee, seconds. We have a motion by Cheryl and a second by Josh. Again, roll call vote. Josh?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie? Debbie, you want me to unmute you for you? I'm trying to unmute you too, and you're not unmuting. There you go. Debbie?
Yes.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, council, next, next item on our agenda, I will need a motion to continue item 5B, which is F and K subdivision, most of Lot 2, Parker Animal Hospital used by special review to a date certain of April 20th, 2020. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Renee and a second by Josh. Roll call vote, Josh.
All right.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item six. This is appeal of planning director determination. This is the first time in 12 years that I've ever seen, you know, that I've gotten to go through this, so I have a script. So bear with me, everybody. Okay. Please note that this item is not a public hearing. Rather, this is an appeal to the Town Council from a determination by the planning director. Transmark Company is the owner of a lot located within the Commercial Office Hotel District Planning Area of the Crown Point Center Development Guide, Third Amendment. Attached to the council action form in your packet is a vicinity map describing the location of the lot. The owner desires to locate a 1,300 square foot Avis budget car rental use on that lot. The community development director determined that that use is not listed as a use by right within this planning area. Under section 6 dot 1 dot 2 dot 1 dot 3 of the Planning Development Guide, quote, "Should an applicant disagree with the determinations of the planning director, he may appeal directly to Town Council," end quote. The owner filed an appeal challenging the determination. A copy of the appeal is attached to the council action form in your packet. The owner will be provided 10 minutes to present to the appeal to the Town Council. Following the presentation of the owner, the community development director will be provided 10 minutes to address the appeal by presenting the community developments position to Town Council, which is summarized in the staff report. A copy of the staff report that is attached to the council action form in your packet. Following these presentations, the Town Council will decide whether the use is not listed as a use by right within the Commercial Office Hotel District. So the town will now hear from the owner, and I'm setting my little clock here for 10 minutes. And, um, let's see here. See here who the owner, see Transmark. I'm assuming whoever else is an admin on here can unmute the appropriate person for Transmark. Um, once we hit the 10 minutes, if the presentation is still going on, I will unmute it, and I will, uh, or I will mute it. Okay, Joel Hertz, it looks like, is here for Transmark. Um, so let me find if I need to unmute Joel. Let's see here. Bear with me, folks, this is the first time we've ever done this, so. Okay, I don't, oh, there we go, Joel. All right, so Joel, I, Joel, you are now unmuted. You have the power. Once you start talking, I'll start the timer.
Mayor and council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
But thank you so much. I'm here on behalf of Transmark Company, who is the developer of the Crown Point Center. The Transmark Company is owned by Steve Skinnell, longtime Colorado resident, and his business partner, Adam Karen. The shopping center is within the Crown Point Development Plan. Uh, Danette, if you can turn the next page. The zoning for the Crown Point Shopping Center was via a Development Guide, the Third Amendment. The shopping center, among other things, including office, hotel, many things, is zoned for a shopping center. The shopping center is up, it's already built, it's gone through all planning, we've done everything we were required to do. The tenants of three of the four spaces have already moved in in this section, Xfinity, Mod Pizza, and Blue Sky Nails. We can flip to the next one, please. There's a 1,381 square foot space that's opened. Avis Rent-A-Car has come to us, and they told us that they want to put a small rental car office in there to rent cars on a short-term basis. Next, please, Danette. Avis is going to use the space solely for office, for short-term rentals of cars. It will not use oil changes, it will not do repairs, it will not do car washes, it will not do maintenance of any kind. They are going to comply with all parking that's required and everything of the like. Next, please. They're not going to bring any significant traffic, they're not going to bring crime, they'll bring taxes to Parker, they're going to comply with all laws, and they'll bring competition to Hertz, which is right across the street, which I'm going to show you in a second. The Avis office that Transmark wants to put in is directly across the street on Parker Road in the Cottonwood Center from a Hertz, and the office is going to be exactly the same as what they're doing there. In fact, ours is probably even going to be smaller. Next, please. Here's a picture of the Hertz in the Cottonwood Center that's directly across the street. Next, please. Here's a copy of our center from the street corner. Next, please. Here's a copy of where the Avis is going to go, and it's going to go right in between the Nail Center and the Xfinity. The Xfinity has more space than what's there, and it's going to be a small space, 1,300 square feet, and the inside is going to be so, solely for office. Next, please. The, we've asked the planning department if they can approve this. We've told them no repairs, no oil changes, none of that, and they said no, because this is not a use customarily found in a shopping center. And they told us we're going to have to go through an expensive rezoning or something similar to that, and frankly, we don't have the time or money to do that. Or something similar to that. And frankly, we don't have the time or money to do that and we think the tenant will walk away. The Development Guide, the Third Amendment that's recorded when we bought the property. Allows this type of use in the center. And Transmark has tried to resolve this with planning. Unfortunately, through great efforts, we couldn't. And we're sorry to take up your time tonight, but. The process we have is to come to you. If you can turn, next, please. The, what the planning department is saying here is. In order for us to use this as a rental car, the, the zoning must specifically say rental car. And that's not what our zoning says. What our zoning says is we're allowed to use as a shopping center. Plus all uses that are customarily found in a shopping center, not only uses that are found in a shopping center. Regardless. Rental car offices are customarily found. And there's thousands of them throughout the United States, again, including the one directly across the street. There's two rental car locations in Parker right now. Fifty percent of them are in shopping centers, which is the one across the street in Cottonwood. And this is the zoning we've got, it comes up. The shopping center, commercial retail, we're allowed to do car care. Which we're not going to be doing there, commercial business, commercial business offices. We would be entitled to build a parking structure, which we're not going to do. Transit facilities, which we're not doing. And this is the important part for mayor and council. Any other use compatible with the set forth above. And a rental car office that's not going to do maintenance or repairs is compatible with the shopping center as shown by what's happening right next door. If we can turn, please. Here is the definition of what we're allowed to do, which is a shopping center, which is three or more commercial establishments planned with common off-street parking and open space. We've got that. That's all agreed. For this reason alone. Our use of an Avis rental office in there should be acceptable. Next, please. Here is the critical part of the zoning and it says we're entitled to shopping centers, including but not limited to. Regional community, neighborhood power centers. And then it says, and all uses customarily associated with shopping centers. It doesn't say, which is, the next one, please. And this is what planning is saying is. Shopping centers, but only uses customarily associated with such shopping centers. That's not what the Development Guide says and we've provided to, uh, mayor and council, it's appendix A to our, uh. This is actually appendix B. This is Hertz's. It's okay. We can just go to the next slide. So. What, what planning has said to us, well, the Hertz directly across the street, they're okay for rental car. And if you look at the zoning they have, it's identical to our zoning and probably even less so. And it doesn't mention rental cars either. Next, please. Here's examples. There's thousands of Hertz's around. Here's one in another shopping center, if you can keep going. Here's another Avis in a shopping center. Here's another one. Next, please. Another Avis. Next, please. And then if you've got appendix C, which I know Danette has, and I don't know what it takes for her to turn it on. We've done a listing of almost four hundred. Rental cars in shopping centers. Inside Colorado, Texas and California. We think there are thousands and thousands of more. Um, we've looked up in various realty sites. There's rental cars. I'm imagining most of you. You've gone to, when you've got your, needed your car fixed or things like that, you've gone into a shopping center and you've rented from Enterprise or something like that. And we've had, uh, you know, that happen. And so here's the coming up is the list. Maybe not so easy.
Why don't you go ahead and continue while the list.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have the list in our packet.
Okay, so if we could go back to the slide presentation.
You have three minutes left, Joel.
Thank you. So. I, I assume you'll see in the packet, you will see appendix C's got that huge list. There are others. And so I want to come back to the point is. Even if Avis is not allowed under the definition of a shopping center. It would be allowed by the other classifications that we have zoning for, which would include. And if we, can we go back to the slideshow? Is that, I'm not, I'm not seeing it on my machine.
I think she's trying.
Okay, thank you. It would be including commercial retail. Car care centers, commercial service business, general business office, which this would qualify it as. And any other use compatible. And we think it's pretty clear under the zoning by which we bought the property. We would be entitled to, uh, do it. I want to respond quickly to the staff report, which is they're pointing to section nine point two point two point one point eight. Um, which is in another part of the zoning for this, and it talks about motor vehicle and motor equipment, sales, leasing, service and repair. That deals with opening up an auto dealership. From the pictures I've showed you earlier, that's not what we're doing. They say that this says rental cars. It doesn't say rental cars. And we are not looking to lease cars, sell cars. Do maintenance, repair, or open up any kind of auto dealership at that property. It's already built. Um, the. Other argument that planning has said is, well, it's not customarily found in shopping centers in the town of Parker. And again, that's not what our zoning says. And in fact, at the end of the day. I believe that fifty percent of the rental cars in the town of Parker are in shopping centers. And I think that would again show that is customarily. Um, we've tried deal, if you can flip to the next one. We've tried diligently with, uh, uh, the planning to get this resolved. We haven't been able to do so. Next, please. And sort of in conclusion. The thirteen eight, thirteen hundred and eighty-one square foot rental office that we want to put in between the Mod Pizza and Xfinity that we've shown you. It's identical to the Hertz across the street. And there's no reason that, uh, Transmark should not be allowed to lease the space. We have the zoning for it. And we believe and we ask mayor and council to go ahead and approve this use for Transmark. And unless there are questions, we thank you for your time.
All right. Thank, thank you very much for the presentation and I was gonna, I was prepared to give you a little bit extra time because of technical difficulties. But you came in with like twenty-eight seconds to spare, so. Uh, that was, that was pretty good. All right. So we're going to go ahead and go on. Um, the town council will now hear from the community development director. Who will also have a ten minute time limit there. So John. Um, once you get rolling, I'll hit my timer to get started and then, um, we'll go from there.
Thank you, mayor. Can you hear me?
Oh, did we lose John?
It, it just froze for a moment. Can you hear me down there?
Yep, you're good.
Good. Thank, thank you, mayor and council, uh, and thank you, Mr. Hertz, for your presentation. Um, and I do have a presentation. I'm just, are you able to see the presentation on your screen?
Uh, not yet. I think Danette's probably trying to get it up as well.
Okay.
Okay. So if you want to, if you want to start or if you want to wait for the presentation, that's fine.
So I'm happy. I'll just, I have it in hard copy. I'll go through it for the sake of, of the cause. We. Um, you have in your packet, a four-page staff memo. Which, um, identifies the issue and the request from Transmark Companies. It also, uh, goes at fairly great length into the analysis that community development staff undertook. With regard to the request for determination. There you go. Thank you, Danette. If you could go toggle forward to the next one, please. So again, I won't belabor the point. You understand where this, uh, site is in Crown Point. Between the Raising Cane's Restaurant and the Sportsman's Warehouse. Um, on the south side of Cottonwood Drive, east of Parker Road. Uh, as well. So. The analysis here is straightforward, uh, from our view. Danette, if you would move forward to the slide three. Thank you. Perfect. Um, so the. Transmark, as Mr. Hertz indicated, owns property in the Crown Point Center Plan Development. They approached staff earlier this year with a request for a zoning determination. About whether an auto rental use would be, would be permitted. At the property in question. Uh, so staff, uh, as part of our role. Evaluated the request against the zoning. Um, and we came to the determination. Um, that the use, uh, in question, auto rental use is not permitted by the Crown Point Center Plan Development zoning. Um, and we communicated that to Transmark through, uh, through Mr. Skinnell. As part of that conversation, we also, uh, spoke with Mr. Skinnell, uh, in person. I met with him. Uh, we spoke with him over the phone, um, and we communicated by email. And, uh, as part of our discussion, multiple discussions. Um, we heard Mr. Skinnell out. We heard his request, his argument. Uh, which is, uh, in opposition to our determination. Uh, and what the use was and why he thought it was allowed by the zoning. Nonetheless, I'm, I'm convinced that, uh, our review was sound from a technical zoning perspective. And was, uh, firmly rooted in the plan development zoning. As part of that, um, we also did discuss with Mr. Skinnell. Options available to him and Transmark under the code. Uh, for the council to consider, uh, the use. And either amend zoning, uh, through a rezoning application. Or approve through a uses not, not itemized application. Um, uh. Changes to the code and the plan development zoning that would allow auto rental use. Uh, Transmark elected instead of third option, which is allowed to them under the code. Uh, to appeal staff determination to the council, uh, and that's this action. Thank you, Danette. So the, the root of this, uh, is that the town of Parker, as most communities do, utilizes permissive zoning. So all uses are prohibited. Except those uses that are clearly and expressly permitted by right. In, in the, in the town's zoning. Whether it's, uh, standard Euclidean zoning, or in this case, uh, planned development zoning. Uh, here we have the Crown Point Center Plan Development zoning. Uh, the property in question, uh, east of Parker Road, south of Cottonwood Drive, is located in the commercial office and hotel district. Uh, there's a fairly broad list of permitted uses, uh, in the zoning document. Uh, but by way of summary, it permits retail, office, service hotels, restaurants, et cetera. There's also what I would consider to be, uh, a catch-all provision. In that the zoning permits shopping centers and those uses that are customarily associated with such centers. Um, so we, we checked the request, not only against the list of permitted zone, uh, uses in the zoning document. It's not retail, uh, it's not office, it's not restaurant. So it was, it, it's clear to us and to me. Uh, that auto rental is not in that list of uses. We then, as part of our review, uh, as we ought to and as we're required to do, compared the requested auto rental use against shopping centers. And, uh, to come to a determination as whether or not auto rental is customary, uh, or not customary in a shopping center. So there's nothing in the zoning that says. When one does that analysis, you can look at the entirety of the United States. That one should look at the United States west of the Mississippi River. Or that one should look at the intermountain west or the southwestern United States, or even Parker for that matter. So. It's a judgment. We, we always benchmark and review uses and proposals and questions of zoning. Against what is kind of happening in the community, in this case, the town of Parker. Not yet, Danette. Um, if you would just go back. So, uh, against that. So we did an analysis. Of shopping centers in Parker and in unincorporated areas adjacent to Parker. We identified thirty-eight shopping centers, meeting the definition of shopping centers in code in the plan development document. We found that of those thirty-eight centers, only one. That's the one, uh, on the, on the west side of Parker Road, south of Cottonwood Drive, that Mr. Hertz referenced, which has a Hertz auto rental. Has that use. So we found that one in thirty-eight shopping centers has auto rental in it. That's a rate of two point six percent. That is not customary, uh, in, in our judgment. It means that auto rental. In terms of shopping centers in Parker and Parker environs of the thirty-eight. Auto rental uses are the exception, not the norm and certainly not the rule. Danette, if you would scroll forward. Other, uh, information, uh, in the staff report. Uh, did Mr. Skinnell and Transmark take any other prior actions? Did they submit a, a permit application? For the auto rental use that we could deny? Did they submit a rezoning application? Did they submit a use in that itemized application? No, they did not do any of those things. This comes out of a series of conversations. With respect to the master plan, you have this slide and the information in your packet through my staff report. Um, the area in question is located in the master plan, regional, commercial, retail, character area. Which is intended to provide for intense retail, including large format retail, think Costco. Restaurant uses, as well as other uses like office and entertainment. Uh, where they're appropriate on a limited basis. We find that from a master plan context, the auto rental use is inconsistent with the master plan. And that's not a judgment on the use, whether it's a good use or a bad use. It just means it doesn't reconcile with the master plan. Again, here we think the options are, uh, a rezoning application to allow the use if council were to approve it. Or a use is not itemized application to allow the use if council was so inclined to support it. Um, and I think in, in the main mayor, that's our, that's our analysis in summary. You have four pages of staff memo with more detail. Um, and so it's not a judgment on use. We don't find that it's allowed in the text of the zoning document. And we believe there are options to allow it. Um, if Transmark is willing to, to take those avenues.
Okay. John, thank you very much for your presentation. Council, before we move on, does anybody have any questions for either John or Joel? Hey, I'm not seeing anyone's hands. Or Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. John, what is the zoning at the, uh, Hertz, at the Cottonwood Strip Mall?
So it's, uh, the Cottonwood Planned Development. It's another, it dates to the early nineteen eighties. It's one of the first development districts in the town.
And does that, does that specifically call out rental? Car as a use or, or, or does it stay broad?
It stays fairly broad, um, consistent with the age of the, with the age of that zoning document.
Okay.
And I can tell you, they arrived there without going through a site plan process. We would have to research how they arrived there. They've been there for several years.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Cheryl?
Yes, I just have a question regarding the parking of vehicles for a leasing activity and the. Um, extended stay and long-term parking for people who rent those cars.
Okay, so it's a question for Joel.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And so, uh, council member opposed. The number of cars that will park there will be well within the zoning that is allowed. There will only believe a handful of cars there at any one time. And this is largely for people who are living in Parker. Who, for example, your car is in an accident and you need a replacement rental car. You'll be able to go and get it there at, at Avis. Obviously, your car will be in the shop. And, you know, you'll park your car either in your garage or in your street. That's the intended use. I hope I answered your question.
Well, I do see rentals where you have extended rentals. Are you going to be picking people up? At their home so that you don't have cars left there for days at a time?
That, I believe that is a service that Avis offers, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, the presentation has concluded. I will go councilperson, roll call through each one for any further discussion items. And then you have two alternative motions. Available at your dispose that will go through after that. So starting with Josh Rivero, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Cheryl Pogue.
No, I don't.
Jeff Toborg.
I don't have anything else.
Renee Williams.
Nothing else.
Debbie Lewis.
I do not.
John Dyak.
Yeah, much like, uh, council member Toborg, I'd be interested to kind of know how Hertz. Did in fact get there. It, it, it seems like an illogical fit. Uh, based upon John's, John's findings. Uh, so it'd be interesting to kind of know that information, uh, here in the future.
Okay. So council, with that, you have two potential motions in front of you and I would entertain one of them at this time.
I move that the use of the lot as requested by the owner is not. Listed as a use by right within the commercial office hotel district.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Renee. Council, I will do a roll call vote again on that. We'll start with Josh Rivero.
All right.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Renee.
Hi.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Uh, yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item up on our agenda, it's item number seven. These are our. Next item up on our agenda, item number seven, these are our ordinances. The first one we have in front of you tonight is ordinance number nine dot three zero seven on second reading. This has been continued from March sixteenth, twenty twenty. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the agreement regarding construction of fee in lieu drainage and flood control improvements. For Lemon Gulch upstream of Crowfoot Valley Road Agreement number twenty dash zero one dot one three. Project number one zero seven zero eight seven. By and between urban drainage and flood control district. DBA mile high mile high flood district and the town of Parker. Alex, you're gonna be the presenter on this tonight?
Yep, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, rock and roll.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. As stated, this item proposes an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the mile high flood district. The purpose of this agreement is to allow for the town to pass through funding from a prospective developer. To the district to fund a portion of improvements to Lemon Gulch upstream of Crowfoot Valley Road. Next slide, please. This this project is located on the west side of Crowfoot Valley Road or the upstream side. South of Stro Road, this is in the southwest corner of the town. It's just upstream from a previous project that was brought before you last. Last month through the metalwork development. The the Lemon Gulch Drainage System is located in the Looking Glass Segment One on proposed development. You can see that shaded in tan on this slide. The main drainage way again is Lemon Gulch, that's shown in pink. And there's also a main tributary to Lemon Gulch. Which is shown in blue, that's known as Brandy Gulch. Both of these drainage ways are currently unimproved and their master plan stabilization improvements are now proposed to be constructed with the first filing of the Looking Glass Development. These drainage way improvements are proposed as a fee in lieu project that will be funded one hundred percent by the Looking Glass Developer. And constructed by the mile high flood district with input from the town. This proposed IGA is needed to allow the town to provide. The mile high flood district with the developers project funding that the town will collect through the subdivision process. The work on each drainage way will occur at different times. The improvements to Brandy Gulch are planned to occur this spring concurrently with the major grading operations for Looking Glass Filing Number One. The improvements to Lemon Gulch will occur later this year, probably late summer or the fall. Which will allow time for the necessary federal permits to be obtained for that drainage way. Therefore, this initial version of the IGA that's proposed tonight includes only the cost for the Brandy Gulch improvement. Once the final cost for the Lemon Gulch improvements are established. An amendment to this IGA will be brought before the council to add those costs. Next slide, please. Just to give you a quick overview of the project. You know, the the main purpose of the project is obviously to stabilize. And prepare the drainage way for the adjacent development. But just a couple of quick points about it. The design does use the dendritic principles that we've discussed with council in the past. And really what this means is that the existing channel alignment, the natural alignment that's out there was utilized in the in the in the design. That helps to minimize impacts of the adjacent topography. There's no major realignment here, we're cutting through hills or anything. Really, we're trying to leave the drainage lane as natural as state as we can. The the flows in the drainage way are not not proposed to be very large in the long term. So grade control for the drainage way is able to be achieved with what they're calling twelve rock ribbons. These are much smaller than the typical drops or check structures that you would see. They're but only about four foot wide. They're minimally invasive to kind of help again minimize the impact of this project. There are some limited areas where rip rip lining is needed, where there's steep grades and erosive conditions in the channel. These these areas will only be limited to kind of the low flow areas. So the area at the bottom of the channel where you would typically see flows on a regular basis. This rip rip lining does not have to extend all the way up to banks to give, you know, a huge kind of full rock section through these areas. And then finally, a regional trail is proposed through this corridor. You know, this project will help support that with its grading operations. And then there will also be two local trail connections to future neighborhoods that will span the drainage way with with RCBs. Box culverts that are also included in this project. So quickly, just to go through the project budget, again, this is one hundred percent developer funded, so the town. How was zero dollars put into this project, but. The construction cost is just over a million dollars. When contingency, construction administration, and then the mile high flood districts administrative fee are added in. The total is just under one point three million dollars. Again, the project is planned to begin late this spring along with the Looking Glass Development. That concludes my presentation, that does recommend approval of this ordinance and Danette next slide. This is kind of shows you what the what the channel looks like. There are some some mildly erosive areas where there is some small head cutting, so. Those are the kind of things we would correct with this project, so I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Alex. Counsel, do you have any questions? If you do, you can click raise your hand and I'll call on you. Hey, I don't, oh, Debbie Lewis. You're not clicking, you're just raising your hand, that's okay, go ahead and unmute yourself, go for it.
I just wanted to say, I'm so sorry that Alex got to use the word dendritic before Councilman Rivera did.
He didn't show us his dendritic tattoo on his arm, so. All right, any other questions for Alex? All right, seen none, I'm gonna switch over to the attendee list because we've got a few people who are attendees tonight and open it up. For public comment at seven fifty five PM. If there is anyone here wishing to address counsel on this item, you can use the chat box and I will call on you and allow you to talk. Okay, not seeing any movement there, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment at seven fifty six PM. And counsel, I'll go through again each individual for discussion and then we will do a motion. Josh Rivera.
Seen none, we got we got head cutting and dendritic said said, so I'm good.
Cheryl Pogue.
This is definitely an area that's gonna need some water damage control.
Okay, Jeff Toborg.
Nothing for me, but thanks for throwing that to Josh during these times, I know he needed it, so.
Renee Williams. Renee, did we lose you? Yeah, I don't think. Unmute yourself, Renee. There we go.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Debbie Lewis.
I made my comment.
John Dyak.
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor, Alex, appreciate your work, thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, please.
I move to approve ordinance number nine point three oh seven on second reading, please.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. I'll come through roll call vote again, Josh Rivera.
All right.
Cheryl Pogue.
Hi.
Jeff Toborg.
Hi.
Renee Williams.
Hi.
Debbie Lewis.
Yes.
John Dyak.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, next item on our agenda is item seven B, this is ordinance number three dot three five three on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Title thirteen of the Parker Municipal Code. By the addition thereto of a new section. Thirteen dot one zero dot two five zero entitled Prairie Dog Management. Bryce, you're gonna lead us.
Mayor, it's actually a John Fusa.
Hey, all right, John Fusa, you're gonna lead us.
I apologize for that, I figured we figured we would take it to the finish.
There you go, bring it home.
Thank you, Danette, if you would move forward with this next slide, please.
So mayor and council, I've been in front of you with regard to this topic several times dating back to early to mid two thousand nineteen. And just by way of background, as you know, the town has experienced substantial growth over the past past ten years. Frankly, over the past several decades. That growth has the potential to impact wildlife and wildlife habitat. By site development and construction activities. This issue has been and is of concern to the town, including. A segment of Parker and Douglas County residents. For example, we heard from both town and county residents with the fairly recent. South Range Crossings project in Stro Road. Over a number of issues, including impacts to an existing prairie dog colony. Happy to report that had a happy outcome. The council direction to staff, including my department, has been to research options for. Mitigating the impact of growth on wildlife and wildlife habitat, including prairie dogs. We last appeared before you at the February tenth study session and at that meeting. Mayor and council, you directed staff to prepare an ordinance. That would effectuate a policy and certain standards. For the management of prairie dogs in connection with development applications. So we've worked on that with the town attorney's office and you had it in front of you. On Thursday, March twelfth, the planning commission held a public hearing. And they recommended unanimously that the town council vote to approve the proposed ordinance. Danette, would you move this slide forward, please? By way of summary, this ordinance has as its principal intent. The humane management of prairie dogs in connection with development proposals and applications. It gives preference to relocation if feasible. And if not, an extermination is necessary with use of humane means of extermination. It is applicable to most of the development application types that the town receives, so think site plan. Minor development plat and the like. It encourages and promotes relocation and specifically. Promotes and encourages applicants to partner with nonprofit conservation and public interest groups. To relocate existing prairie dogs and prairie dog colonies. Many of these nonprofit groups are local in nature. And we see them at public meetings and hearings in connection with development projects. If relocation is infeasible, the ordinance provides that. A humane means of extermination should be used. And that all products. That are used by applicants and developers in this process shall be approved. By the appropriate governmental entities. Like the Colorado Department of Agriculture and the US Fish and Wildlife Service. If there are endangered or threatened species found on the site. Then no extermination shall take place until those endangered and threatened species are protected. In concert with the US Fish and Wildlife Service standards. Any products used in mitigation and extermination must be non-toxic. So think carbon dioxide or carbon monoxide based products. They need to address and eliminate secondary poisoning of other species. And they need to eliminate impacts to non-target species. Finally, the ordinance provides that applicants and developers shall provide the town with a certification. Which indicates their compliance with the ordinance as they go through their development project and the development process. Thank you, Danette. So bottom line, analysis and recommendation, this ordinance begins to address town concerns. In response to public comments that you mayor and council have heard as have staff. In my department with development over the past several years, if not longer. It creates a policy and standards for prairie dog management where none currently exist. This ordinance and the policy and standards it incorporates are consistent with the Parker twenty thirty five master plan. Staff recommends approval. The planning commission on March twelfth agreed and recommends that town council approve the ordinance. They did have some comments. Which is to consider in the future as this is implemented. Making sure that applicants undertake a good faith effort effort to partner with nonprofit groups seeking relocation. That the town consider timeframes for action. So that this so that the requirements here don't go on forever. And in general, to consider additional standards in the future once this if this. Ordinance is adopted and once it's implemented and we understand how it works. And how the development community responds to it. Okay, if you would move forward and actually if you would go. We'll hold here real quick, there were multiple members of the public at the March twelfth planning commission meeting. I would estimate about twenty residents, all of them expressed support for the ordinance. They suggested additional requirements and standards in the future if this works. And they did propose timeframes for action in the future. If that proves to be an issue. If you would toggle forward, please. And and with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval, thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Thanks, John, appreciate it, before we move on to public comment, we're gonna go counsel member roll call if they have any questions for you, John. So let's start off with Josh Rivera.
John, just a couple of questions. But I noticed in the in the bill. We've identified that we're also working on an environment environmental assessment ordinance. Does the ordinance we're voting on tonight stand alone without the environmental assessment ordinance since it's still in process?
The bill in front of the council tonight stands alone and on its own for action.
Excellent, and then without putting it into ordinance. Could it not be the responsibility of staff to recommend partnership and good faith effort with not for profits, please?
Yes, that's correct, I I anticipate that there'll have to be. An administrative mechanism created to implement the ordinance, the law, as there almost always has to be. And that is part of that, we could provide some provisions and guidance about those partnerships.
Outstanding, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl Pogue.
Yes, John, I want to thank you and your staff for working on this so diligently and bringing it forward. I do think it needs to be enacted. So that it has a written record of what's going on rather than just putting it into staff's lap. So I I think that town council needs to take a vote on this and support your staff.
Thank you.
Jeff Toborg.
I don't have any till after public comment, thanks, Mayor.
Renee Williams.
I'm good, thank you.
Debbie Lewis.
No questions.
John Dyak.
No, I I just want to thank thank John and his staff for the many study sessions that we've had. On this topic, appreciate your answers and your diligence to getting this to the finish line, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Excellent, we're gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment at eight oh six PM. It looks like we've got a couple attendees. That are that are here that don't recognize their names, so. We do have a first comment from Mark Snyder, Mark, where it's gonna work, I'm going to pull up my phone here. That's got a timer on it, you've got a three minute time limit. And I'll start the timer after you state your name and address. For the record, please, so, okay, you're up.
Thank you, mayor and council, my name is Mark Snyder Jr. Address is one two nine one eight, Ironstone Way, Parker, Colorado.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, council, and thank you, John, for your work and your help with the ordinance. This is very important to many of us here in Parker, as you know. And you probably remember me from last year at this time, I spoke to you all. But my name is Mark Snyder Jr. And this summer, I led a prairie dog relocation from the Stro Ranch neighborhood of Parker to Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. In Jefferson County, we successfully relocated one hundred and eighty two prairie dogs. Who are now thriving at their new home, we were just up to visit them a little while ago. And they're ready to soon welcome their annual litter of new pups. Because of the efforts that we took this summer. But I wanted to speak this evening to provide you with evidence that. A cooperative relationship between wildlife conservationists and land developers is entirely possible. Dominion was not only helpful and transparent, but they provided the project with ten thousand dollars to help with the relocation efforts. We have a devoted team of prairie dog activists and conservations in Colorado. That understand the importance of this Keystone native species to the ecosystem of Parker, as well as the whole state of Colorado. We have resources and people to do the work as well as provide expertise in this type of wildlife conservation. Parker, by voting to pass this ordinance, will become a leader in Douglas County. As well as a model for other jurisdictions to protect to protect this native species. As well as protect natural habitats in our communities. The imbalances within the wildlife community have caused animals to infringe upon our neighborhoods. Looking for food and shelter as we encroach upon their natural habitat. Prairie dogs are a food source for many species. That include the endangered black-footed ferret, as well as homes for the endangered burrowing owl. We are removing the main food source for coyotes and birds of prey in Parker, and I think we. We've all seen that happening. This ordinance not only provides a possible relocation plan for prairie dog colonies. But at the very least, provides humane extermination as an alternative to the noxious. Brutal and violent death that the current preferred method of administering fumatoxin provides. Just a few weeks ago, Ronnie Purcella, a well-known prairie dog exterminator. Used fumatoxin on the development site located at Pine Lane and Parker Road. And allowed dying prairie dogs to suffer above ground only feet from the walking trail. This reckless use of a deadly poison is not only inhumane, but it is irresponsible. Secondary poisoning of pets, birds of prey, owls and other predators will continue to happen when we allow this behavior. With this extraordinary growth of Douglas County, we need to revise our policies to protect what was always here. And what should be allowed to live and thrive. Prairie dogs are unique and special to our state and our town and our county. Their numbers have dwindled to low numbers and we need to act before they are gone forever. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, Mark, that was perfectly timed because you're at four seconds. So I I don't think you could have done it any better. So all right, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. We've got. Looks like we've got two attendees who've raised their hand but haven't put their information into the system. What if if you guys could each put your name and address, as was stated earlier into the chat? So we have it for the record and then that way I'll go through and call you and you can have your three minutes as well. Okay, I'm looking. I'm not seeing it coming up. I don't know if you're actively typing it in as we speak. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and do this. Linda, I'm going to go ahead and and oh, there we go. Oh, wait, no. Well, I can't unmute. The procedures you're supposed to put in your name and address for the record before unmute you. You can type that into text. Or into the chat box. But what I'm going to do is this, Linda, I'm going to go ahead and go to you first. I won't start the timer until you've stated your name and address for the record. And then that way you'll get your three minutes. So Linda, you're up and I will unmute you and you're set to go, Linda. Linda, can you hear me? You're unmuted right now, so it's your chance to go. You just need to state your name and address, please. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and then we'll move on to I apologize if I screw up your name. Saibat?
Siobhan.
The bond. All right. You're set to go. Let me let me unmute you and you're ready to roll.
Hi, I'm Siobhan Cox. My address is 42943 Vista Ridge Road, Parker, 80138. I wanted to thank the town for your efforts on this ordinance. I do support it and I would love to see you pass it tonight. It is really critical to protect and save prairie dogs. They have, as the Humane Society says, an unparalleled ecological importance in the ecosystem. Of Colorado and the Great Plains. They're part of our ecological. Inheritance basically here in Colorado and dozens of other species depend on them for shelter and food. So when we protect prairie dogs, we're protecting dozens of other species as well. Mark talked about the fumatoxin that was used at the Parker Auto Plaza site on March 11. Some of us witnessed that poisoning. I wasn't there, but I've seen video of it. It was very, very heartbreaking. And as Mark said. Dead and dying animals were left within easy. Just a short distance of walkways and pathways. Where this fumatoxin could not only impact other wildlife in addition to prairie dogs, but could in impact children. Family dogs, teenagers, anyone who happened to get too close. It's something that I believe that this ordinance will outlaw, and I think that is important from both in the perspective. Of people and the perspective of wildlife. It's a terrible way to die. And it's it can impact humans and has caused death among humans as well. On the whole, as I said, I do support this ordinance. I'd love to see it. Require a good faith effort as opposed to just encouragement to developers to work with. Others to relocate the prairie dogs, but I and I'd also love to see a strong. Rigorous process of reviewing the certifications. But on the whole, I would love to see you go ahead and pass this tonight, and I do very much appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and I apologize for for messing up your name at the beginning there. Linda, this all go ahead and let's see via telephone, no internet. Let me try to unmute you, Linda, one more time if you're. Linda, if you're there, go ahead and state your name and address for the record and I'll give you your three minutes. Okay. All right, I'm not hearing anything from Linda. Okay, so and it doesn't look like we have any more. Let's see here on for okay, Amanda. Let me find you on the list. All right, so man, we've got Amanda and we've got Mandy's. I think it's the same person. And hey, let me hit the right. There we go. You're set to go, Manny. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name hello is Amanda Steinhauser and 9157 Bayou Gulch Road in Parker, Colorado. And I am not very prepared for this, but I wanted to just agree and commend my. Friends for speaking up and Mark for, you know, getting us all motivated. And everyone who helped create this ordinance. As noted, you know, prairie dogs are just an important Keystone species to Colorado. So many animals depend on them for food and for shelter and. I I've just as I've lived in Parker for over almost eight years now, and I've just seen big birds of prey swooping down. You know, on these colonies and I just that it happens all the time. You'll see them up in the trees hovering over. Prairie dog sites and you just it's it would be so. Easy for these other animals to accidentally get poisoned as well as. Animals that are on the ground too, or you know, possibly our pets. And I just want to say I I just think it's we would be a great example to other towns and to other counties. To hopefully adopt their own ordinances and to our children and, you know, our families. I my daughter. Is she's now an adult, but one of her favorite things to see growing up were prairie dogs. She still has her prairie dog stuffed animal and. I just think that. You know, what example are we giving whenever we just kill these large colonies and they're there one day and they're. You know, they're having fun. They're playing with each other and then the next day they're they're gone. It's it's sad. And and I hate seeing it and just thank you so much. I appreciate. This creation of this ordinance and I just I pray that you pass it.
Okay, Amanda, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, last call here for anyone wanting to speak on public comment. Just need to go to the chat box and type in your name and address. And it doesn't look like we've got any more coming in, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 8:17 PM. And council, like we've been doing, I'll go through a roll call opportunity for you to give any last input and then we will go through. And and I'll entertain a motion. So starting with Josh Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First to Mark Snyder and and crew. Well done. I think you guys are epitome of of active citizens and what you've done. In allowing the town to to see the need and the ability to create an ordinance that can answer this. I. I just commend you on your work. And I commend you because I think the town's going to be better. I hope the town will be better tonight. After your hard work and then and then again, after the the town staff's hard work in creating this ordinance. I look forward to the environmental assessment piece coming online shortly, but I think this ordinance is a great step. So well done to all.
Okay, Cheryl Pogue.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the community for stepping forward. I do recognize the need to keep our little critters available and without humane. In Asia, it just creates a risk for a lot of other species that we have out there. So thank you.
Okay, Jeff Toborg.
So shortly after my election, Mark Snyder was talking to me in 2019 and we were talking about. What if groups came on the property and took all the work and the developers didn't have to do that? And I said. Mark, I'm going to have to see that to believe that and not three or four months later, here comes Mark Snyder. Dominion's given us money. We're going on the land. They're they're protecting it. And if you could see the sunburn on Mark after his three or four days collecting 300 prairie dogs. I was I was convinced it could be done. So Mark to you, to Barb, to your whole team. My commendations, my thanks for proving that it can be done. I I know that you'll work respectfully with our development community. I know you'll be a great partner with them and so thanks for continuing the push. I know it's been a long, long uphill bow for you guys. But thanks for continuing to push. It's well worth it.
Hey, Renee Williams.
Excellent citizen initiative. Thank you very much. No other comments.
Okay, Debbie Lewis.
Again, just kudos to the citizen group. To the developer and particularly Dominion and with their monetary contribution and to town staff. Great job.
Okay. John Dyak.
Yeah, I just want to echo echo again what I said the first time. I probably should have saved that for for this time, but. Again, thanks to staff for doing everything necessary to get this to where it's at now. Appreciate it.
Okay, so with that, we'll go through a roll call vote and then I have I'll have a few comments at the end as well. So let's start with Josh.
Did you like a motion?
We need a motion. Yeah, let's go ahead and do a motion on that.
I move to approve ordinance number.
I approve ordinance 3.53 on second reading.
Actually, Jeff, sorry, Cheryl beat you to the punch. She stole your thunder and she. Motion by Cheryl and a second by Jeff. Josh.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Jeff.
Absolutely.
Renee.
Hi.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Excellent. Motion passes unanimously. Just a quick note I want to throw out there for those. Public who are listening to this and for council as well. You know, prairie dogs have been an issue for as long as I've been involved and even before that with the town. So we're talking, you know, 12, 15 years. I know Debbie, even back when you were first around on it, there were issues going wrong with that as well. One of the things that I know lots of you on council and myself have always pushed is this public private partnership. And the empowerment of our citizens. For our guests who testified tonight, you know, absolutely hats off and kudos for you. For being able to get this to happen, but I'm going to give a little piece of advice to it just from my own personal experience. Because the reality is the six council members and myself are citizens as well. And there's the biggest killer to these types of of public private groupings are assumptions. And I will tell you through this improvement, this whole process and council, the majority of council members and myself encouraging. Our citizens to find, you know, good partnership solutions. There was an assumption that was made that Parker hates anything that has to do with. Prairie dogs or animal conservation or anything. And and I really got exposed to that when, to be quite frank, I went on Facebook to try to find this private group. Because I wanted to donate some money to it to help you guys out. And when I saw the absolutely mean hateful, nasty and honestly threatening my family who lives right next door to this as well. It was just so disheartening that the process had to be brought to that level. People who have never even asked me. How I personally felt about prairie dogs. Made comments akin to, I hope what happens to these prairie dogs happens to the mayor's family. Who lives next next to them. And I just got to say on a personal level, I mean, that's not acceptable. So while I applaud this situation, I hope and I pray. That what it does is it blossoms out to show people that they should not assume. And make assumptions onto any of these processes. Because positive things can come from it when we all stop and talk like civil human beings. So that's my input onto this. That wraps up our first council meeting or virtual council meeting. Council staff, thank you guys very much for your time. Public, thank you for coming out and seeing our meeting. And with that, without any further business before council, we're going to adjourn at 8:23 PM. Have a good evening, everybody.